The afternoon session of Winter City Council Planning Committee. It is Thursday the 17th of October, two o'clock. Just a quick reminder to, not to members because they know already, but to members of the public, don't forget to turn off your phones. Mobile phones, I've put them on silent. You can have three minutes, after three minutes to talk to us. And then there could quite possibly be questions of clarification from members of the committee. And just to remind everybody that this meeting is being livestreamed, audio recorded and livestreamed from the council's website. And the video recorder of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. So we move on to the business items for the afternoon. Agenda item 11.
Chair, could I just run a roll call of members?
Of course, you need to check board here. Yes, over to you, Dave, sorry.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, members. councillor Clea?
Yes, present.
Councillor Evans?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Gordon Smith? Councillor Gordon Smith? Welcome back to councillor Gordon Smith. Councillor Laming?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor McLean?
Present.
Councillor Reed?
Present.
Councillor Rutan?
Present.
And councillor Pearson?
Present.
Councillor Gordon Smith? I will go through the officers present in the meeting and then I will come back to councillor Gordon Smith again. Just to inform the meeting that we have Julie Pinnock, Serviceley Built Environment in the meeting this afternoon. Fiona Sutherland, the Public Law Manager. And for planning case officers, for item 11, the Old Bank, Lisa Booth. And then for item 12, Hestock Close, Robert Green. Item 13, Gleat Villas, Rose Lister. And for the tree preservation order, which is item 14, Compton Street, Ivan Gerdler. I'm David Shaw from Committee Services in the St Giles Room. And we're supported this afternoon by Matthew Watson from Democratic Services in the Milton. Thank you, Chair.
And I believe, Dave, we also have Zoe Keeble for on the ecology section with this agenda item 11. And do we know whether councillor Gordon Smith was with us?
I shall ask again. Councillor Gordon Smith?
I can't see him.
No, I don't think we've got him present in the meeting at the moment.
So shall I start with him not being back?
Yes, Chair, if you wish.
Or is he just coming? I'll just wait a couple of minutes just to... Otherwise it means that he can't take part in the meeting. Sorry.
Yes, if you would like to wait just a moment, we'll just see if we can get hold of him to join. Well, it'll take a second.
Councillor Laming, do you think you could turn your microphone off?
Sorry.
Thank you. I'm so sorry if you're listening to the audio recording. We are waiting for one councillor of the committee just to give him a chance to join in. Otherwise, he won't be able to take part in the meeting. And he's been on a site visit. So it would seem pretty to not allow him to take part in the application. Matthew, you've got your...
Chair, I can see councillor Gordon Smith in the list of participants now. I'll just open my mic and ask if he could just confirm his attendance. Councillor Gordon Smith?
Sorry, yes, I'm attending. I'm here.
Great.
That's all members in attendance then, Chair. Thank you.
So, agenda item 11, SDNP/19/05173/4. This is the Old Bank erection of a single detached dwelling and amended plans were received on the 31st of July 2020. The case officer is Lisa Booth. Good afternoon, Lisa. Good afternoon, Lisa.
Oh, I'm on now, sorry. Good afternoon, Chair.
Look, I can see you now. Are you ready to start your presentation?
Yes, I'm ready.
Good, good. Off you go then.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I would just draw your attention to the update sheet, which has provided some clarification on points that were raised. So the application has been brought back to Planning Committee after it was deferred by members to visit the site, which we have done. The proposal is for a three-bedroom detached dwelling in the rear garden of the Old Bank High Street, West Meon. And the site is located within the settlement and conservation area of West Meon, which lies in the South Downs National Park. The principle of the new dwelling is, the settlement is generally supported by local plan policy. All right. This is it on aerial map. The rear garden of the Old Bank slopes down to the tree-lined River Meon tributary in an L shape. Sitting to the south of the Old Chapel and White Horse Cottage and the Sadleary is to the west. There is an existing access drive to the east of the Old Bank down to Hard Standing. The L-shaped design dwelling utilizes the existing slope of the land. A single-story element is proposed on the higher part of the land and a two-story element will start 7.6 metres from the rear boundary on lower level land. It will be built using hardwood weatherboarding and slate roof. Garden areas will be to the front, side and rear of the property and parking for two cars to the front and three parking spaces for the Old Bank with a seven-metre-wide turning area. The village plan of West Meon is one of fairly dense development within its centre with no set building lines or spatial characteristics. So I'll just go back to this plan. You can see from the site location plan that the centre of West Meon does not have a set building line. There are other examples of built development close to the River Meon, to the east of the site at Brook Lodge, Weeding Cottage, Yeald Garage and Orchard Cottage. Views through to the site are limited from the high street due to the juxtaposition of the houses along the road and the land to the rear of the house dropping away towards the river. The proposal is not considered to be visually detrimental to the character of the area or street scene. Views of the trees beyond will still be maintained. The siteing of the dwelling in the plot has been informed by the location of the River Meon and the requirement for a five-metre riparian buffer. The riparian buffer will be planted with additional relevant landscaping. The inclusion of the riparian buffer will also ensure that there is space around the building and that the buffer remains between the dwelling and the River Meon. The case officer has measured the riparian buffer on site and is satisfied that it is five metres more in some places. And this has been verified by the ecology officer on site. Concerns have been raised about the impact of the development on the amenities of a number of dwellings surrounding the site. The proposed dwelling has been significantly reduced in height and size from that that was originally submitted. It will be built into the slope of the land with a single-story element closest to the boundary walls of the nearest neighbouring properties. The neighbours of the Old Chapel and White Horse Cottage are the most affected by the proposal in terms of outlook. A single-story element will be between 1.8 metres and 2.4 metres from the rear boundary of White Horse Cottage. And there is a distance of approximately 27 metres between the two dwellings. The Old Chapel will have an oblique view of the dwelling with views maintained somewhat through to the trees along the riverbank. There is 18 metres between the Old Chapel and the two-story element of the proposed dwelling. The distances between the neighbouring properties and the proposal are considered reasonable. Windows to the north serve on suites and will be obscured glass and there will be a distance of 20 metres from first-floor bedroom window looking west towards the rear of the Sadleary's garden. It's understood why neighbours objected to the changes brought about by the proposal, but an assessment has to be made on the harm that would arise from the development. A balanced approach has been taken and it is not considered that the proposal would result in detrimental harm to the outlook overlooking and amenities of neighbouring properties and is detailed further in the report. Hampshire County Highways has not objected to the proposal, subject to conditions. The requisite number of parking spaces has been provided for each household and turning has been provided. The dwelling as proposed, along with the recommended conditions, will ensure that it is appropriate site to avoid harmful impacts to the character and appearance of the South Downs National Park and the West Meon Conservation Area. The development would not result in detrimental impact on the amenities of neighbouring properties in terms of loss of privacy, light or overbearing impacts or affect the ecology or biodiversity. For reasons outlined above, the application is therefore recommended for approval subject to the conditions outlined in the report. I'll just take you through photographs again. So you've got the site looking west. You should all be familiar with this site now. So looking west again. East. This is the north-east boundary of the White Horse Cottage. That's from the garden area of White Horse Cottage. Back in the garden. Old Chapel garden. From the bedroom window, view from the Sadleary. The end of the garden. Again. View from first-floor room window of the Sadleary. That's from the Old Bank itself and its conservatory. This is the access to the site. Driveway down. This is driveway and turning area. And then I went out and measured, these are the riparian buffer. So this is just some pictures of measurements and then just some pictures along the riverbank. You can see, this is the, I think it's east. Millstream Cottage. They've got a fence along there which is closer. Can just see on the top left-hand picture, the fence there and how the riparian buffer on the Old Bank is going to be further in than that fence line. That's it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Before we go to public speaking, which is next, I think it's important to explain that this is the second time that most of us have heard this presentation and perhaps what is about to be told to us by the members of the public, with two exceptions. Councillor Pearson was here at the last meeting and as a deputy, but because he wasn't intending to be here, he didn't take part in the site visit. But he does come from in the area. And councillor Reed wasn't at the last committee meeting, but he is here today. And he did come on the site visit, just to explain the make-up of the committee. So we'll move over then to public speaking. And the first public speaker is Neil March from the Southern Planning Practice. Good afternoon, Neil.
Hello, hi. Can you hear me okay?
There's a huge amount of interference on that line, I'm afraid.
Really?
We shouldn't be turning our microphone on. It was then really quiet. I think we see where we go, but if you speak, maybe it's touch and ground. When you're ready, Neil, you obviously can't hear the...
I can hear you fine. Yeah, okay, you're ready?
Yeah, you can speak loudly though because the sound is so loud. It's drowning your voice out. But you've got three minutes, Neil.
Good afternoon. I'm speaking on behalf of the owners of the three nearest NIMBYs properties, the Old Methodist Chapel, White Horse Cottage.
Neil, so sorry, so sorry for the cussing going this clock. We're going to have to speak louder than that. Because the interference is so loud. It's like a television gone wrong.
Chair, Chair.
And you shout at us. We continue.
Chair, if Mr. March wants to leave the meeting and re-join for a second, we might be able to improve the line.
Do you want to try that?
Okay, I'll try that.
Turn your camera off.
It was really difficult, members, wasn't it, to hear?
Yes, Chair, it was almost inaudible, I'm afraid. He would be ashamed to miss his contribution.
Yes, and objection has to come first, everybody. So we have to wait for him to come back in. I'm afraid it's no different.
Neil, try turning the camera off and see if that improves it.
Can you hear me now? No.
Oh, I know. It is definitely your mic connection. Right, you are muted now, so I can see your lips moving.
I said, sorry, it's no difference to what I did last time.
The interference is still there.
Really?
Yeah. And then, you know, if you didn't hear it, then we're letting you know. So can we restart the clock? If you're sorry for interrupting.
Okay. Good afternoon. I am speaking on behalf of the owners of the three nearest NIMBYs properties, the Old Methodist Chapel, White Horse Cottage and the Sadleary. We are all deeply concerned at the prospect of planning permission being granted for the proposed development. They are not NIMBYs, they are local residents who live very close to the application site and will be greatly affected by the proposal and are therefore exercising their democratic right to highlight their concerns and raise entirely valid grounds of objection based on material planning considerations. My clients are grateful that you agreed to their request to undertake a site visit and let me take the time out to do this. We felt that it was very important that you saw the site for yourself and perceive the potential impact that would occur on such a constrained site with restricted park and access in a sensitive location, backland location, right next to the River Meon. Seeing the footprint of the dwelling laid out on the site is a revelation as it confirmed that the proposed dwelling would take up a substantial amount of the site and would be within touching distance of the Britain Flint boundary wall belonging to White Horse Cottage, as well as being a very short distance from the riverbank and from the river itself. It also confirmed what many of us had already suspected, that the site layout plan and the site section are inaccurate and misleading as they give the impression that the proposed dwelling is further away from the river than it actually is. It also gives the impression that the area to the south of the dwelling, where the five-metre riparian buffer is proposed, is a spacious and open area of grass, whereas in fact it mainly comprises the entirety of the riverbank which falls steeply down to the river. As a result of these inaccuracies and the misrepresentation that it gives, approval of the scheme as it stands could well be opened to challenge. We have highlighted this to officers and advised that the applicant should be made to see the accurate plans based on a proper site survey before a decision is reached. Having visited the site, you will have seen the two extents to which the proposed dwelling would impact on the rivers, the trees, the neighbouring properties and the wildlife up travels and colleges along the river corridor. You will have seen the constrained nature of the active driveway, which is only a single-wick and has a finch length. You will have also seen how close the dwelling will be to the boundaries of NIMBYs properties and how the increased use of the driveway will affect the Old Methodist Chapel, which is an upside-down property with basements on ground floors. You will also be able to observe and assess the levels of looking that will occur. You will have also seen how patently close the dwelling will be to the river and the riverbank and their importance to devise over wildlife corridors that provides important habitat for a wide range of creatures, including otter and waterbowl, both of which have been reintroduced to River Meon in recent years. You will have also seen the trees along the riverbank, which were called the dwelling to be in the shade for the last part of the year, which has left an entirely valid objection from the council tree officer that seems to have been overlooked. Lighting from the many windows and doors will illuminate the trees and the riverbanks as well as other parts of the site to the detriment of neighbours' amenities and the animals that rely on the dark habitat that runs along the wildlife river corridor. We simply hope to see how there will not be an adverse impact on matters of equal political importance in such a sensitive site in such a sensitive location as this and as the majority of the competition is sought to be acknowledged. Individually and collectively, these are all valid and legitimate reasons why the application should be refused.
Thank you. I would be grateful if you would now just turn your microphone off and put it on again if there are any questions for you. Because that's actually quite a relief for us, because it was very loud. Was that shouting, Neil, that...
Were you shouting? Not quite, no.
No. If you could turn it off, thank you, lovely. Let's see if there are any questions for you.
Yes, Chair, if I could just say, I heard everything that Neil was saying, although it was difficult to hear because of the interference. But I'm sure that members will indicate if they couldn't hear. But I could hear everything he was saying. We have councillor Pearson with a question, Chair.
Yes, and me too. I could hear everything. But the most dominant noise was the interference. But I could, I did hear everything he said. Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chairman. Neil, greetings once again. Many years since I've seen you last. Nice to see you again. You referred to neighbours commenting about the track into the site going past the chapel. Was that track there originally or is it a new track?
No, it's the existing driveway which already serves Old Bank. So that will be utilized by the new dwelling. But it is a single-wick driveway, as I said, with that pinch point, which is the point we were trying to make. So there will be an increased use of that existing single-wick track.
Are you concerned about increased movement along an existing driveway?
Yes, there will be an intensification, a doubling effect of the movement of vehicles. And it's... The point is that one of my client properties, the Old Methodist Chapel, is an upside-down property, so it has bedrooms on the ground floor. So hence more potential disturbance.
Yeah, I understand that point. Thank you, Neil.
And thank you for turning that off again. Members, just before we see if there's any more questions, could I just have clarification from you that you did actually hear Neil March's contribution to his objection? Does anyone not hear it, not fully hear it? No, so we can take that. We all heard it. So Vice Chair, any more questions for Neil?
I believe councillor McLean has a question, Chair.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Rutter. Neil, hi, hello again. Environmental services have, what does it say? It says, "The site is within flood zone one and at very low risk of surface water flooding." I wonder if you could comment on flooding and the Meon in that part? Is it brown to it?
No, I mean flood zone one is the lowest level of flood risk. So it's not something that I'm aware of. It is an acute issue at a location or something that my clients are often pushing. So that's not really necessary.
Vice Chair, any more questions?
Councillor Laming?
Last bit that Neil said, Chair.
I'm sorry. I'm taking over, councillor Rutter. So councillor McLean first. What did you say?
I just missed the last part of what Neil said.
Could you repeat the end of your answer to councillor McLean?
It's basically saying, is there any history of flooding in that area?
I don't know. That's not something I discussed with my clients. And to say, from a planning point of view, it's flood risk one. So it is the lowest level of flooding. It's not something that we are particularly pushing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rutter, sorry.
Councillor Laming has a question, Chair.
Yeah, that's a quick one, Neil. When we went there on site visit, the active gardens were very boggy. And it seemed to be that the water was flowing down the hill underground or was coming out around that area. Could you make any comments on that, please?
All I'd say is, yes, that was my impression as well. I suspect it's just saliva land and the fact that the water will run off from the higher points down to the lower points as it moves through the river. So there will be elements of that lower section of the site that will probably be quite wet and boggy at that period of times of the year.
Vice Chair, any more questions?
No further questions at all, Mr. March. Thank you.
Mr. March, thank you very much indeed.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Councillor McLean would like to ask another question, if that's possible.
Thank you, Chair. On the report, page 87, Environment Agency. Just trying to tease out this flooding thing, but it says, "Although we have no objection to the proposal submitted, we strongly recommend," on the last paragraph, "that the consideration be given to the use of floodproofing measures to reduce the impact of flooding when it occurs." So basically, the guys you're representing have got no history of flooding. But the EA are saying they should build it to withstand floods. Any comments on that, Neil?
I haven't. Flooding isn't something specific that I discussed with my clients.
All right.
Mr. March is not the case officer, he's a representing client.
Yes, but he may know the history, councillor Evans.
Councillor Rutter, is that it?
That's it, Chair.
Thank you. So, Mr. March, thank you very much for coming along. And yeah, great, you've turned your camera off. So the next speaker is one of the ward councillors, councillor Hugh Lumby. Good afternoon, councillor Lumby.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon. And when you're ready, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for everybody for the opportunity to speak today. And thank you also to everybody who visited the site. Hopefully that was a useful way to understand the concerns which Mr. March has also run through just now. I do still have real worries about this application. First, the report suggests it's in its previously developed land, or PDL, supporting the principle of development. But as I understand it, this has always been open space. The fact that the owners have used it as a rubbish tip certainly shouldn't qualify as brownfield. Indeed, you will see that PDL specifically excludes land in built-up areas such as residential gardens. So I think this is not entirely in accordance with SD25 and the principal development is significantly reduced because of its back garden location. You will have seen how tight the site is. At the rear, it's right up against the riverbank. Lisa has said that the five-metre buffer has been maintained. But I'd like to understand how the measurements were made. Given the steep bank, how was this done? Because five metres of the slope is not five metres on the flat. A local resident scaled it off the plan and found that the buffer was less than five metres in the flat. So these are important questions. Whilst on plans, I should also mention the concerns relating to some of the plans being misleading. Now, where example, I understand that they show the river in the wrong place, suggest the southern aspect is more spacious than it is, and stop the hedge between the Old Bank and Sadleary shorter where it really ends, again, to create a feeling of more space. We do, I think, need to get to the bottom of this. Are the officers totally satisfied that the plans provided accurately represent the position on the ground? Because if they don't, then they are potentially misleading and we're into judicial review territory. I see that the same erroneous plan has been used in the arbor tree impact assessment. So here is an example of someone who may have been misled by the position of the building. Contrast here the comments of the council's own tree officer, who has expressed a real concern about the development. Sorry for the straight talking here, and I make no criticism of the officers. In any event, we know for sure that the south elevation is very close to the river and that the main windows and the bifold doors face that way. There's a real concern that lighting will come out from here. We've been pointed to the condition on tinted glass, but with respect, Chair, it is the very essence of bifold doors and a window that they open. Tinted glass doesn't have any impact there and the light will spill out directly into the sink, disturbing the wildlife. This is directly contrary to the dark skies policy in SD2, 5 and 9. Members in this context may have seen the recent call by scientists for greater protection for smaller bodies of water, led by Dr Jeremy Biggs of the Fresh Water Habitat Trust. And as a related point, is there really any prospect of the conditions here being monitored and enforced or action taken in relation to any future increase in lighting? I'm sure we all have experiences and views on that. We also heard about the adverse impact on the amenity to the neighbours. I was somewhat surprised at the tone taken by the applicant's agent at the last meeting in relation to them. It's clear they have genuine concerns and will be adversely affected by the development in terms of noise, loss of privacy and potential damage. And on the frankly unnecessary NIMBY accusations, the committee will also, of course, be aware that there were many objections to the scheme from elsewhere in the village and the surrounding area. It's also worth mentioning that the car parking proposal... It's also worth mentioning that the car parking proposal, in reality, is not big enough to allow vehicles belonging to Old Bank to drive in forwards, turn and exit in a forward gear, especially if the two spaces allocated to the new property are in use. The photos provided show them relying on the hard standing behind the old Methodist Chapel to park and turn, but this is allocated as part of the parking for the new dwelling. And here, please note that the Hubbs Authority admitting their comments that the level of car parking has not been fully assessed. There is then the issue of access. You will have seen how narrow the access is with the issues of how construction and emergency traffic will get in and out. You will have seen how at present high-sided vans can't get in. This is a real concern as it means that construction traffic will end up parked in A thirty-two, which, as you know, is a busy arterial road. The applicant's representative dismissed the emergency vehicle's concern last time by making a comparison with Grenfell Tower. I'm sorry, but I don't see that provides any comfort. I mentioned before my worries about reliance on large numbers of conditions. It's reasonable to be concerned about compliance, both the construction and going forward, and whether this will be effectively enforced. I have real worries here that the conditions which are there to protect neighbours of the area and wildlife may in reality not provide as much protection members would hope. Refusal is the only way to provide protection in this case. For all those reasons, I ask the application be refused. It's not a PDL and the proposal breaches numerous policies, including SD one, two, nine, eleven and twenty-five. Thank you again for your time, rather breathlessly through that one, and happy Christmas to everybody as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Lumby. Brilliant timing. And we'll just wait for a few seconds to see if there are any questions for you. Vice Chair, any questions for councillor Lumby?
No questions indicated, Chair.
So thank you very much, councillor Lumby.
Thank you, Chair, and also just again, thank you everybody for going on and having a look. Much appreciated. Thank you.
And so that brings, oh no, it doesn't bring us to the end. Now we have the agent, supporter, Richard Low. Good afternoon, Mr. Low. Mr. Low.
Yeah, sorry, I just, I had my microphone muted. I'm sorry.
I know, it's a common, but we all do that too.
I have everything on.
You can't put your camera on, if you wish. Do you want to put your camera on or not?
Why not? Why not? It's not a pretty sight. I do apologise for that.
Nice to see the person speaking. Anyway, when you're ready, Mr. Low.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chair. The applicants have the land, they have the opportunity and the means and the encouragement of your pre-application advice to allow them to settle in the village in a designed, low-carbon, energy-efficient house. But they have the support of national planning policy and of your own local planning policy. We have heard from Mr. Marsh and councillor Lumby just how inappropriate this development is, and they have offered numerous specious reasons for you to overturn your officer's recommendation. I'm not entirely clear why neither thought it necessary to make similar representations to the parish council when the application was considered locally. We know that there has been some local objection to the application. We know that the tenor of that objection has been personal, vituperative and defamatory. We know that objectors have been prepared to ignore or distort facts, especially more latterly in relation to the site dimensions, to serve their own narrative. But in the end, there have been just thirteen objections from a village population of almost eight hundred. The village are not up in arms about this application. The parish council has not objected and it is not controversial. The principal objectors are the owners of the three properties to the north of the application site. Their wide-ranging concerns, though, can be distilled into the one predominant objection. Any development on this site will blight their outlook, and that is the issue. But there is no entitlement to that outlook in law. It is the very definition of not in my backyard. The applicants have bent over backwards, working with your officers to address the objections and have voluntarily redesigned the whole dwelling to be substantially smaller, sitting lower on the site than the originally submitted proposal. Conservation areas are not immutable. They develop and grow over time and planning policy supports and encourages such change. This is a proposal for a modest new dwelling in a traditional form, using traditional materials in a sustainable location in line with your own policy. It would be perplexing if you were now to refuse an application on the caprice of a handful of self-interested local residents when all the technical and planning policy issues have been addressed to the satisfaction of your offices and statutory consultees. It is an attractive development proposal that has no adverse effect impact upon the amenities of neighbours, on the settings of distant and unconnected listed buildings or on the character of the conservation area within which it can barely be seen and only then if you are actively looking for it. This application is therefore commended to you.
Thank you very much.
Pretty much close to three minutes.
Yes, well done. Thank you. We just waited for a few minutes. I have a couple of questions, so perhaps I'll start off. They're all related to the same thing, really.
Sure, yeah.
And that is the sort of use of the house or the owners of the house going towards the river or the tributary or whatever it is because it's.
It's a mill feed.
Mill feed, yeah. So the bifold doors which are opening out towards the riparian buffer, what space is there there for the owners to use?
The owners will principally use the space to the west of the building as the private patio space rather than to the south of the building where there is less room, obviously. There's one set of fully glazed doors that may or may not open. I mean, I think we're proposing that they open at the moment. They wouldn't have to. But there is only one set and that is where the building is. I couldn't give you the precise dimension off the top of my head, but two or three metres from the riparian buffer. The patio and patio area is actually shown on the drawings.
Right. Yes, I just wondered why the, why were you the architect, Mr. Low?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Why the bifold doors were put in there with very little space to do anything else?
I'm sorry, just because we wanted to open up the, open up the house to the garden. It doesn't say that everybody will be congregating between the house and the riparian buffer. Indeed, they are most unlikely to.
Thank you. And then the other thing is, this, which I'd quite like someone to talk me through and I can ask the case officer, but I'll start with you, is the automatic blackout blinds. So when the lighting gets to a certain low level, the blinds come down? Is that how that?
Either the blinds will come down if they are so, or the double glazed or triple glazed units will be electrostatically charged, so they become opaque.
The window, the glass does. And how will the blinds work? What will they react to? The loss of light?
Yeah, as the light declines, the blinds which are set between the panes of the glass, so they won't be on the inside of the whole window, they would actually be set within the double glazing unit, would either at a switch or automatically on the basis of a light sensor be shut.
I see.
Automatically or automatically.
Yeah, thank you. Vice Chair, any further questions for Mr. Low?
Yes, I have a question, Chair, if I may. Thank you. Mr. Low, we've heard that this area of garden is being described as previously developed land. And we've seen that with seen photographs with bits of rubble and old vehicles and so on and also a large area of hard standing. Can you just describe to us what this area has been used for in the past and why it's described as previously developed land, please?
It's partly been used as a dumping ground for all sorts of objects and vehicles and various garden equipment presumably over the years. Since my clients acquired the land, they have used it partly to store and goods for when they built their extension to the rear of Bank House, but also for cars and for an assortment of barbecues and the like. I don't think I've described the site as previously developed. I think I might have described it as brownfield land, which may or may not mean exactly the same thing, but it is part of the residential curtilage of Bank House and has a residential use.
Thank you.
I don't know whether that answers your query.
I think so. Thank you very much. It's not, it's not. I think that the question is, it's not really been used as a beautiful garden for years.
No, no, I don't think it's ever. Well, certainly it was overgrown when my clients acquired the property. I've got no knowledge of it before then.
Thank you. We have two more questions, Chair, from councillor Reed and councillor Pearson.
Councillor Reed and councillor.
Pearson, councillor Pearson, Chair.
Yes, sorry, didn't put here. Councillor Reed, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Low, you mentioned the self-closing blinds. This will only operate presumably if the windows are closed. So on bifocal doors in a summer's evening and the light goes down, I know myself, I tend to sit in the garden and drink and do whatever. The blinds won't come into effect.
No, I mean.
Light spreading from that house.
There will, there will be.
Is that correct?
There will be times when, like in every house, you might want to sit outside at dusk or early evening when you need the windows open, particularly in the summer. I think one must expect that not twenty-four, seven for three hundred and sixty-five days a year will the blinds be shut at seven o'clock at night. I think some reasonable latitude ought to be extended over the use of bifold doors that I would imagine these days a significant proportion of all houses have. It's not going to be anything other than residential purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Low.
Councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Chairman. Richard, you must be more than aware that one of the issues is this riparian boundary and the flood risk from the rivers. I'm not quite sure from the map whether these are two tributaries or whether this is a braided stream. But could you tell me where the bluff is which marks the edge of the flood plain of the two rivers? Is it actually the bank or is it further back towards the A thirty-two?
The flood, it's actually in flood risk zone one. It's the old mill feed which tees off from the river Meon, something like, and I am slightly guessing here, two hundred metres to the east of the site. I think I made the point somewhere. If it were in flood zone three A, which is the most serious flood zone, the likelihood is that we would have been asked as a protective, a preventative measure to set the ground floor level about six hundred millimetres above the level of the water. Now, that's in the worst case. We are two metres higher than the level of the water at the proposed level that we have set for the ground floor. So even if it were flood zone three A, which it's not, we would be well, well above any flooding of the lead. It's never been known to flood by two metres or anything like it.
Yes.
Possibly in the dawn of time. I don't know, but certainly not.
It's a useful clarification, Richard. I mean, obviously this is an issue and I recognise Neil Marsh admitted that this was flood risk one, which is, as you rightly say, as low as you can get it. Indeed, most houses come under flood risk one. But it is linked, of course, with this wildlife channel. Two metres above, which basically means the bank which leads directly down to one of these. Is it tributaries or is it braided stream?
It's a lead. It's a mill feed.
It's a mill feed, right, okay. So technically it'd be rather swift current if there was a lot of water at any time, if there was a lot of water in it. And I notice you may have taken care, correct me if I'm wrong here, to make sure that there is a vegetation cover on this bank, which not only provide cover for wildlife but also provide protection for the ground of the bank itself. Is that correct?
It is true, and it will be a condition of the planning permission that we plant the whole of that riparian buffer with a native species. And I should just add, because it was a query that was raised earlier or a point that was raised earlier, that the five metres we have measured is in the horizontal plane. So the actual riparian buffer is slightly more than five metres, given that it will be on the incline. So we are five metres measured in the horizontal plane from the edge of the northern edge of the lead and just for the avoidance of doubt.
Yeah. And then from the other side of the mill race to the actual river itself, that is flood plain and that is part of the wildlife.
I believe that's flood risk zone one as well.
Oh, is it?
I believe so. I stand corrected because it wasn't part of my, once we're in flood zone one, that determines that we don't have to take any preventative measures. Although by, just by design, our floor level is two metres higher than the lead anywhere.
Yeah, I understand that. That's actually very useful. Is the actual gap between the two streams, is that part of the biodiversity channel? Or is that potentially development land?
No, no, it's part of the diversity channel. I mean, we cannot, obviously there will be no further development on this site and the development does not encroach on that riparian buffer.
Yeah.
At its nearest point, it's a metre and a half from that five metres riparian buffer. And there's no evidence, as set out in our ecology report, that there are currently water voles or otters or any other menagerie of wildlife, but that the land itself is suitable for water voles and that's what we intend to make it.
That's very useful. Thank you, Richard.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair, any further?
No further questions, Chair. Thank you.
So thank you very much, Mr. Low.
Thank you.
Go back to the sort of.
I might mute myself now.
Mute and yeah, turn your camera off, but obviously you'll stay with us. So I just want to remind everybody that we do have Zoe Keeble with us from the ecology section. And Zoe, do leap in if you wish to answer any questions, but we will come to ecology as part of the heading. Lisa, anything that you want to say to the committee before we go into questions in the light of what you've heard in public participation?
No, I don't think I have anything further to add, Chair.
And Zoe, was there anything you wanted to say?
Hi, Chair, thank you. Nothing at this point. Thanks.
Okay, right. So we'll go then councillors to the report, which, sorry, I did have here, which starts on page ninety-two. And so shall we look at questions on principle of development and design scale and impact on the character of the area? We'll go on to residential amenity and ecology later. So principle of development, design scale and impact on the character of the area.
There are no questions currently indicated, Chair.
Okay. So we'll move on then to impact on residential amenity. Now, we have been on site and we did look at the proposed property from various angles and various gardens.
Again, no questions indicated, Chair.
Thank you. So we'll go on to ecology. Zoe, I'd like to ask you about the slight concern I have. I think councillor Reed sort of highlighted it, that the ecology of the area depends on the darkness at night and there might be occasions in the summer and spring, a good part of the year. a good part of the year when there isn't darkness because the doors will be open. So what effect would that have on the ecology of the area?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question because it's been brought up a couple of times. I think we have to consider whether it's going to have a significant impact. Obviously, as it's been said, if the doors are left open, there will be some illumination will spill out. Whether that would go past the five metres or not without looking at a sort of a detailed lighting plan, I couldn't say. It may be that it would illuminate the buffer area and not the channel itself. I think also because it's sloping down, that may sort of favour that. I think there would be a slight impact is the answer, but whether that would be significant, I couldn't say.
Thank you. And is it your recommendation, and I couldn't see from all the conditions, is it your recommendation that the riparian buffer should be fenced off?
We did talk about this last time and I would like to see that within the plan, condition 10. Yeah, I would suggest that it would be a post and rail fence so that wildlife could freely move between the garden and the river, but people would be less likely to go within that buffer zone.
Thank you. Looking at condition 10 and it doesn't say anything about fencing.
No, no, it isn't in there in the wording. I don't know if Lisa would like to comment on that, but it'd be something I would look for when we get those plans.
Lisa, would you like to make a comment about fencing on condition?
I'm sorry, I missed that. Sorry, I was looking at something else.
Yeah, I was just asking Zoe about the ecology of the riparian buffer. And I did ask, should that area be fenced off from the main garden? And Zoe's recommendation that yes, it should with a post and rail fence. But the condition 10 doesn't say anything about that.
No, it's nothing. You know, we haven't been specific about it, but we can... Yeah, it may be something that can be included when they submit the VMPP, the biodiversity mitigation enhancement plan. It could be added into that as part of it.
Could we add it to that condition, Chair, please?
Oh, yeah, hard and soft.
Condition 12.
Condition 12, hard and soft landscaping as well. We could... I could add it on to that.
Chairman, it's there. It says, one of the bullet points is details of means of enclosure, fencing, walling and all boundary treatments.
Oh, yeah, there you go then. Yeah. So condition 12, the third point, details of any means of enclosure, fencing, walling and all boundary treatments. So it can be submitted as part of that.
It doesn't request or require that buffer to be fenced off though, does it? So perhaps we should include that as a condition, Chair?
Yeah, I could add it on to the condition 12, oh, 10 or 12. About the, yeah, I can add it on to either condition 10 or 12.
Well, just check with the committee that should this be approved, it is recommended approval.
Yeah.
Approved, is it your wish, committee, that the riparian buffer should be fenced off?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yes, yes, please, Chair, yes.
Yes.
Yes. I did put in for a question, but I think this is important. How far back from the lead, as it's been called, would the fence have to be to be affected?
Well, I think we probably leave that to the experts, but...
No, I'd like some sort of an answer.
It's just we can't really sort of pluck a number out the air now.
Is it something Zoe would maybe be aware of?
Yeah, the five metres goes down the bank, doesn't it? I didn't know that banks had toes, but it obviously...
No, we were told it was on the horizontal, Chair. The five metres was on the horizontal.
Like that. When I went on site, yeah, it was horizontal. So someone's down in the river and holding it up, right, and then up me at the top of the bank. So...
So I think councillor McKenna's question is where will it be? Where would this fencing be?
I think it'll be similar to, I showed you a photograph of the neighbouring property. It's got its fence that juts out and then obviously it would probably come off of that along, in line with the five metres that's required. So it'd be set further back in than the fence on the neighbouring property.
So that's the view. You would need to have that in a condition, will you?
Yes. So yes, it could be added to a condition.
Yeah. Thank you. Anything else on the policy?
Yes, Chair, we had, well, councillor McKenna, I don't know whether he's asked this question. And then we have councillor Laming.
No, I tried to get, sorry, thank you, Chair, I tried to get my question in at the end of immediately. Can we just have, for the sake of correctness under amenity, the planning mean of loss of a view or loss of a view over some lands from the, if you like, the three properties that are going on to it? Is there a planning in the South Downs National Park? Is there a planning right to review or not? Thank you.
The chairman says only for the public.
Well, I mean, I could answer it, but I'm sorry for the answers.
We're just looking up the policy, Chair. Says we can quote from the policy, the immunity assessment.
In regard to, yeah, okay. Yeah, in terms of the policy, ST5, it's have regard to avoiding harmful impact upon or from any surrounding uses and amenities. So it's weighing up that balance of, you know, is it overbearing? Is it, you know, it's going to harm their amenities? Is it going to take away all their light? But a view in legal terms, I don't know, you know, I haven't got that to hand, but nobody has a right to a view. Obviously, you have a right to amenity of your property and your garden. And then we have to obviously weigh that up, how that is impacted.
Thank you. I think that helps.
Right. So councillor Laming.
Thank you, Chair. Two questions. Zoe, on this lead that runs along the bottom, what sort of wildlife are you expecting to use that run through? Because water voles are notoriously shy with public. Are you satisfied that we won't be disturbing anything at all along there?
Thank you, councillor. Oh, yeah, just to answer that quickly. So what sort of wildlife would be using it? It's, we do expect otter to be using it and there are records of them in other areas on the River Meeon. And like, sorry, like the applicant said, there is no actual evidence of waterfall on site itself. But we know that they have been reintroduced into the Meeon and they more than likely could be within that stretch of river. Other than that, we could see a great number of foraging bats using that dark corridor and the mature trees along the river's edge as well. So it's definitely of quite high ecological importance. And then to answer the second part, which was whether you think we've sort of done enough mitigation, whether we've avoided significant harm and mitigated for that. And I think we have sort of taken all the reasonable precautions. We've obviously got the construction environmental management plan as a suggested condition, condition 10. So that needs to detail how they would avoid and mitigate for any impacts during construction. And then we've got the biodiversity mitigation enhancement plan, which details how they will manage and keep that buffer, that riparian buffer in the long term. And that should enhance biodiversity on the site. And then we've obviously got the lighting conditions as well. And I think that addresses all of the main potential forms of impact that could impact the sink.
The other part of the question is, when we went and the land was extremely boggy, it would appear that you're getting an underflow of water coming out above the lead in the gardens. So are you concerned when they're washing the house or the cars of actual chemicals getting into the Meeon?
Yeah, it was something that I considered. I'm not really a drainage expert. I did ask those questions and the Environment Agency was consulted and the drainage engineers and they were all happy with that. So I sort of have to take their expertise on board and I don't consider there to be any potential for that.
Thank you. You've done a really thorough job. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Chair, we have two more questions from councillor Reed and councillor Pearson. Thank you.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just a little confused over this, where one takes measurements from. If we're including the shoulder of the river, the officer said they stood in the river to take the measurement from there. So that does include the shoulder, not the flat land only. Is that correct? Or is it me just being after the stupid?
Obviously, you need to stand, yeah, it was taken from the toe of the river. So obviously, if someone's standing there looking up the bank, so their feet are touching the toe, you need to stand there to get the correct measurement. So there with your hand. It's hard to explain without doing it physically. It's not taking, it wasn't taking, it was right at the edge of the river bank.
So you do take in the shoulder of the river?
Yes.
Okay. The other one, and it's really a question which councillor McClane asked with regard to safeguarding views, ST62C covers that, which is youth and public wildlife way, open access and other physically accessible areas. So that covers the safeguarding of views. Thank you, Chair.
But was that a question, councillor Reed, or just a statement?
The last one was an answer really to the safeguarding views, which is out of the South Downs National Park policy, ST6.
Thank you. Councillor Pearson.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I'm fine. Question of Zoe, if I may. Zoe, you mentioned in your report, which is very useful, bijou, entails all the essentials. I'm a bit confused by one point where you refer to the five metre riparian buffer is also proposed from the edge of the River Meeon. Now, we've had referred now to that section of the river, inverted commas, is actually in fact the old mill race. So can we be precise in our definition? Because the River Meeon, some distance, well comparatively, back from that point. We're actually talking about this buffer from the toe of the lead up that bank. Is that, am I correct on that?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, so basically I was referring to the River Meeon sink, site of importance for nature conservation, and that lead is actually part of that designation. So I was referring to the designation rather than the main river. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I noticed on the map, they both call the River Meeon. That's why I wanted to be clarified precisely, which I'm sure everyone understands, but perhaps our clarification, which is very useful. Now, the wooden fence you said you would like to see there, I assume then that that fence should be at least on the edge of that riparian boundary, preferably a little bit farther back from there. Am I correct on that? Is that what you prefer?
Yes, I would want the whole five metre buffer within that fenced area. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted you to express that. So it's quite clear. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, any more questions?
No more questions, Chair. Thank you.
I have four more questions, Zoe. I'm still on the light issue. So I'm just thinking about the course of the year and it can be really nice weather, late May, June, certainly July, yes, August and summer September. So we're looking at four, four and a half months there where the doors, the bifold doors could be open and then there would be lights village. What species are going to be affected by that? Bats presumably or not?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, all nocturnal species could potentially be impacted by lighting. So certain bat species are sort of more tolerant to it than others, but certainly there's some impacts on all bats. An otter as well, because they're nocturnal animals, could potentially be impacted. I think one thing I sort of wanted to kind of bring to everyone's attention, it will depend where the lighting is inside the building as to how much spill there would be. So if there's a light within sort of the centre of the room, there might not be very much light spill outside at all. Whereas if there's sort of lighting near the doors, then the impact could be greater. So it's quite hard to tell how much lighting disturbance that could cause without sort of seeing details of it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Zoe. Yes, there are no more questions on ecology. But they're all sort of linked up, aren't they? So do come back in, Zoe, if you wish. We move on to the remaining headings. So we've got lighting and trees, highways. I think probably people might have a few questions on that. And sustainability and nitrates and anything to do with the conditions. Now, lighting, if we're looking at that, and I'm waiting for Vice Chair to tell me any more questions. But lighting, we're not going to have external lighting. But I'm quite concerned as to what we just heard from Zoe about the bifold doors and then the blackout blinds not working. I don't know. Is there a solution to that, Lisa?
I don't know, to be honest. I mean, we've got details to be submitted and you would assume that things would work as they, you know, as it was submitted. Obviously, you've got allow for things not working sometimes, breaking. But until we get details of that, it's...
I think, Chairman, the National Park are satisfied with this approach that we're proposing. As a, I put my camera on, have I? No, that's better, sorry. I think the National Park are satisfied with this approach. As Lisa said, she's proposed a condition and we will get those details. And we would normally, you know, particularly on a sensitive site like this, take advice from the National Park officer as well on that. So I think I would say I'm satisfied. The other thing I wondered, and I know, I mean, maybe it's just me, but I'm sat outside on a nice evening. I normally shut my door because I don't want all the bugs to go in, you know, that attracted to any light. So I think there's a balance here and I think the conditions and proposals probably are sufficient to deal with the matter. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
We have councillor Laming with a question, Chair.
Councillor Laming.
On highways, I'm a little concerned that anything of any size can't go down to deliver or emergency vehicles get down to the place and they'll be out on the A22, isn't it? Is there anything we can do to ensure the safety of the traffic or don't we worry too much about that?
To answer. As I've said in my report, we have put a condition on asking for condition six, which asks for details of construction vehicles for the parking and turning of operative and construction vehicles. So details of that will be submitted. Obviously, it's like, you know, I'm sure this isn't the only site. You know, they've had an extension built, so they've managed a construction extension. Okay, without any complaints or blocking highway. Obviously, you'd have to have appropriate sized vehicles to access the site. But obviously, all the details for that will have to come in by condition. So we can see what they will be doing. But obviously, it's, yeah, the site is site restrictive. So you'd need to plan for that appropriately. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any more?
No further questions, Chair.
Right, so we're in debate.
Chair, may I, just before you move into debate, could I just ask that the case officer, in view of the comments made by objectors, including councillor Lumby, that the plans are perhaps not accurate, could I just ask the case officer to confirm for the benefit of the committee that she's totally satisfied as to the accuracy of the applicant's plans? That would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiona.
Yes, Fiona, I've... From the site layout plan, yes, it is accurate. Shall I say about this? I've been out and I've measured sites. I'm confident that everything is where it is. I know there's been comment on the section through, and I have measured it, but yes, it is slightly different. But the trouble is that it's... I think it's quite hard to do a profile, because the river isn't straight, the bank isn't straight, the profiles aren't straight, and it does get wider. It just depends where that section through has been taken from. If it's further up the river, on the edge of the boundary of the old bank, then I would say that it was probably accurate. But we will use the site plan for measurements from, and I do believe that is accurate. Yes, I have no reason to doubt it.
Thank you very much. And that's an important question to verify. And you've been down on site every time.
Five times.
Yeah. They've had plenty of times to go down and verify the...
Yes.
Right, so I think... Thank you, Fiona. That was a useful question, and we are now in debate.
We have councillor Pearson and myself for debate so far, Chair.
Councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I mean, as I remarked earlier on, I was unfortunate that I wasn't able to go on this site visit. But I was present at the... When we initially looked at this site, and I agree that I favoured the site visit, and I'm glad members were able to go to see, get the benefit of that. The worries that I had originally have now been answered, and they were basically about the wildlife corridor and the comfort width, if you like, the riverine boundary is far enough back, measured at horizontal scale, five metres, that's 15 metres plus. I mean, that's quite a width for a small stream, bearing in mind that part of that wildlife corridor is on the other side of the Leet before you get to the main Meeon as well. As far as the light is concerned, light spill, yes, is a concern, because of course, the National Park's dark skies policy. One of the curious things, I mean, I live within the National Park, and we have light spill from this house, and indeed from the one street light on the lane which I long live. Curiously, those lights attract insects, and insects attract bats. So I'm not quite sure how much we need concern that the bats would be frightened away by light. Strong lights, perhaps, but I don't think light spillage would be that, other than to attract insects, which attract the bats themselves. The... As far as things like otters and water voles are concerned, yes, there is concern. But the boundary of this building is actually just as close as some of the buildings farther up the River Meeon. And the wildlife corridor is, if you like, used to that, and I'm pretty sure that wildlife would act pretty quick, very quickly to that, especially as this additional planting is going to be put onto that boundary, onto the banks themselves, which would not only provide cover for wildlife, but also would protect the bank itself from erosion, which is always a feature on the edge of rivers. Flood level one, very, very low risk. Now, other issues regarding the views of neighbours, well, as the planning officer said, no one has the right to review, although, if you recall, I did question this as part of the National Park policies. And I was assured by the response I got that a view in this case would not include the sort of view we're talking about from the neighbours, especially as this house is smaller than the original application. It's... The whole lot has been small, reduced in size, which I favour, and I think in my mind makes it easier to accept this application. I'd be interested to hear what other members have to say about this, because they have had benefit of this site visit. But on balance, so far, I favour this application, even with the difficulties of the drive. But the drive was there already, and the gap between the house and the chapel fence is no narrower, no wider than it has been for a number of years. So one's got to... It would be very difficult to turn it down based on that. So I listen to hear what other members have to say.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I tend to agree with councillor Pearson. I'd just like to say, I do understand the concerns of local residents, but I think that the applicant has bent over backwards to change the design, to reduce the size of the house. I know they're concerned that the room that is indicated on the ground floor as a study might be used as a bedroom. I think that it's increasingly only reasonable these days to accept that a house needs somewhere that people can work from home, and it's on the ground floor. I don't see any more reason for that study to be used as a bedroom than any other study in any other house. I think that I visited the site, and I noticed that most of the cottages and houses were higgledy piggledy, cheek by jowl, some much closer to each other, some further apart, some close to the river and its tributaries, some further away. And whilst this is the conservation area of the village, it is still in the development area of the village. And so it is within our planning rules that somebody should be allowed to build there. And whilst I don't think it is previously developed land, I do think that it was in the past a rather neglected, overgrown dumping ground, if you like, car park for extra vehicles. There's obviously a large area of hard standing. I don't know what that was used for or what it was previously, and the applicant doesn't know, because that's in past history. But then, but nevertheless, it's not a beautiful garden. It's a piece of land which is available for development within the development site of the village. And I think that this form of sort of junkyard will now be a beautiful home with a well-kept garden. And I'm sure that it's very much in their interest to look after, for instance, the retaining wall behind the house. And I can't see any reason to turn down this application, so I will be supporting the officer's recommendation. I'll also say that whilst... I agree that whilst the doors may be open after dark, it will only be very quickly to make sure that the insects don't get into the house, and then they'll be closed. And they certainly won't be open all night. So I think that the lights village concern from the double doors is not going to be sufficient to cause significant harm. So I commend the officers. They've all done a huge amount of work on this, particularly, I think, our ecology officers. And I'd like to commend their efforts and to thank them for their work. Thank you very much. Now, Chair, we have debate also from councillor Reed, councillor Clear, councillor Gordon Smith, and councillor Laming. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Councillor Reed, you're next.
Thank you, Chairman. Interesting application. What I would like to do is thank the officers and also the local residents for allowing me to go on a site visit, which was a different day to everybody else due to health reasons. Yes, I had some concerns with regard to roof lights when I saw them, but that has been covered within a condition. I looked at the South Danden National Park document, looked at the design, SD5, dark skies, SD8, safeguarding views, SD6, SD7, which was relative tranquility, and SD25, which is the scarp sites. I could not find anything in there that we could actually pin a refusal on, with all honesty. I think that the original application, which was a much larger property, has been scaled back to a degree that it's still a very tight fit on the amount of land that is left for the developable area. I did have concerns about vehicles entering the site and obviously leaving the site, as the local member did. That part of the A32 has got a notorious history. Those who might remember the Red Lion just around the corner, and I think the reason the Red Lion closed in the end was in the amount of accidents that occurred in that vicinity. So it is a fast-moving road. To have any vehicle parked on the highway there would cause a certain amount of problem. When I looked at the bank, the old bank, and saw the extension that had been permitted, which overlapped into the driveway, that I wasn't quite aware for, by looking... Quite aware of when looking at the plans originally. So really, going back to it, I can find really no reason, planning reason, for refusing this application. I'm glad that it's actually smaller than the initial application, and therefore will go along with the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Clear?
Thank you, Chair. Well, we've all visited the site, and yes, questions have been raised. Obviously, not an ideal situation for neighbours, but assessments regarding lighting, the riparian buffer have been explained. I would agree that the poster rail fence to be added to Condition 10 or 12. I honestly feel that my main concerns have been addressed by the officers, who I would also like to thank. They've worked hard and done a good job. And with the conditions that have been applied, I think this covers all queries raised. So, Chair, I do support this application.
Thank you. Councillor Gordon Smith?
Well, I have to say, I am rather unhappy about this, and I think the light spillage... I know we've been discussing whether the windows are going to be left open after dark, and where the light fittings are going to be inside the house. And it, to me, there seems to be a lack of a robust condition. You know, I'm sure everybody else on the committee has come across conditions which are actually unenforceable. And so I don't think I can support this application. Although I appreciate that people have put a lot of effort into finding ways, I don't think the conditions as regards light are sufficiently robust, and I think it's going to have, in the long term, a dire effect on the River Meeon. Okay?
Thank you. Councillor Laming?
I think the officers have done an incredibly good job on this. I do have quite a few reservations, which a lot of those have been answered. But I've got certain sympathy with what councillor Gordon Smith has just said, and I find this very difficult to decide. So I shall listen to the remainder of the debate and make up my mind then.
Is there any more to be? Councillor Rutter?
I don't think there is, Chair. So councillor Laming's going to have to make up his mind now.
Thank you very much.
Right, I would just like to say, I supported the site visit, because I couldn't understand the access, and it looked so narrow. But so it was worth going down to the site to see that. And also, the overlooking from neighbours, and there didn't seem to be any overlooking. Yes, some of the neighbours would be able to see this property, but that has been lowered, and there is a flat section. I do... This seems to be an awful lot of angst coming out of the neighbours in that area. I would like the riparian buffer to be separated from the garden. I still have concerns over those bifold doors for two reasons. One, that they're going to emit light spillage, and it depends how nice an evening it is. And also, it opens out onto virtually no garden space, because the garden space is elsewhere. So I sort of regret that. Whether that's a reason to turn the whole thing down, it probably isn't. But I hope that the owners will respect that wildlife corridor and will understand that if they're going to have table lamps and whatever, angle pois lamps right near the doors, that is going to disturb, as we heard from our ecology officer, it is going to disturb some of the nocturnal wildlife. So yes, on balance, but it is on balance, I'm afraid. I'm going to support the application. So I think we're ready to move to the vote.
Sorry, Chair, we have councillor McLean for debate now as well.
It's okay. It's okay. Councillor Evans has just said exactly what I wanted to say.
Thank you, councillor McLean.
Okay, thank you. So we're ready to...
Chairman, could I correct one thing I think I said? I think I said five metres is 15 metres. I, of course, meant five metres is 15 feet. So if I did say that, please accept that correction.
I think we all understood you, councillor Pearson.
No, but it's important to have clarification. Thank you. Okay, so this application has been recommended for approval, and the conditions are set out on page 97 and 98, 99, and 101. But Lisa, I have just noticed that there's no informative, especially about building hours and...
Hours of operation and no burning is one of our normal informatives. We can add that. I think what happened, the National Park would prefer us not to add too many informatives. And obviously, we work on their template, but there's no... We can certainly add those in standard informatives that we have agreed in the past.
Actually, they could be there, because it's important for neighbours to know the hours of operation. And the National Park leave us to determine this application, don't they?
No, that's fine. I'll put the... So the burning one and...
Well, whatever else normally goes in our...
Yeah, okay.
There's two normally. One about the hours of operation, and we also had a second one about, you know, burning and be considered, et cetera.
Yep. No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so this application, as I said, has been recommended for approval. There are no extra conditions on the update sheet. So I will pass over to Dave to do the roll call for the committee to indicate how they would like to vote.
Yeah, we have Mrs Sutherland who'd like to contribute.
Yes. Sorry, Chair, unless I missed something. I don't think you specifically mentioned the reference to the fencing to secure the riparian buffer, which was an addition, one of the conditions.
I did.
You're adding it to Condition 10.
12.
Yes, I think I missed that, Chairman.
Could we have one person speaking at a time? I did, Mrs Sullivan, mention it before, and I did ask the committee, would they be agreeable to that? But I'm happy to ask them again. Committee, would you be happy for the rail, post and rail fence to be in either Condition 10 or 12, were ever appropriate, to fence off the riparian?
Agreed.
Agreed.
And then councillor Pearson, what did you want to say? Did you want to say anything?
No, I was just emphasizing that I...
Sorry, you're muted.
Right, okay. I mentioned this with Zoe, if you recall, and I do agree it should be conditioned to make sure that the riparian boundary is actually fenced off by that type of fencing that Zoe recommends.
Yeah, what we're talking about.
Yes, it will.
Mrs Sullivan, anything else? Just if I see you all.
No, that's fine. Thank you, Chair.
Miss Spinnick, you want to say something?
Just chatting. You're muted. Sorry, Chair, can you hear me now?
Nice.
Thank you. Lisa and I were just chatting. I thought it would sit comfortably in Condition 12, but Lisa rightly points out to me that the Condition 10 deals with the biodiversity mitigation enhancement plan. And if we condition it as part of that, then obviously Zoe can look at that when we discharge that condition. So it probably does sit more comfortably in Condition 10, Chair.
Okay, so we have the agreement of the committee that there should be a fence and post fence between the fence off the... Okay, so we have the agreement of the committee that there should be a fence and post fence between the fence of the riparian. Recommended that it should be in condition ten. And the whole application is recommended for approval. And that being all, I'm going to pass over to Dave to do the roll call.
I'll take the vote now, Chair.
Thank you.
Four.
Councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
I'm against.
Councillor Leamy? Four. Councillor McLean?
I should abstain.
Councillor Reed?
Four.
Councillor Ritter?
Four.
And councillor Pearson?
Four.
So that's six, four, one against and one abstention.
I think there are two. I thought I heard two abstentions, but did I mishear it?
There was one against and one abstention, Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. So who, so who was against?
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Oh, I see. I thought it was the same. Okay, yes. But that application is through. We move on then to thirteen hairstock close. Everyone's permission, are you happy to go straight on? We've got one, two, three more applications to deal with. Or do you want to break, committee?
I'm happy to go on, Chair. I've done about everybody else then.
So I'm speaking again.
Yeah, let's press on.
So we're now on item number twelve, which is twenty slash oh oh eight oh seven slash HOU. Thirteen hairstock close. Get the- It's a, it's a first floor side extension. And the case officer is Robert Green. Good afternoon, Robert.
Good afternoon, Chair.
And are you ready to give us your presentation?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
You can go then.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon councillors. So first to start with the location of the site, so we're in the far north of Winchester. So you can see Andover Road running through the centre of the image there and King's Barton Development to the right. Sorry Chair, we've just lost the presentation, so we'll get that up.
Councillors Pearson and Gordon Smith, could you mute your microphone? Thank you.
Thank you Chair. So moving closer into the site, so you can see it there outlined in red. And you can also see the extension, an existing extension for the utility room, quite clearly narrow into the garden there. This is the application site directly in front of the house. So the proposal is to extend to the left of the house here, below the ridge height and also set back from the front elevation. So you can see the chimney on the neighbouring property here. It's just between the chimney and that side window you can see there. Moving on to elevations, starting with the front, you can see the extension to the left here. It's set down by just under a metre from the ridge height. And it's hard to see in two D, but it's set two point one metres back from the front elevation of the house and retaining this flat roof above the garage that you can see there. Looking at the rear, so you have the existing utility room extension here and the proposal above with the connecting roof form. And a side view from the perspective of fourteen hairstock close. So this is taken from the opposite side of the garden. And you can see the extension here at first floor with a window which is obscure glazed as per condition four. And jumping to the opposite side, this is the view from twelve hairstock close. This is the front of the property to the right, so you can see that setback of two, two point one metres there. And the extension built on top of the existing utility room. Showing that in a floor plan, you can see on the left that the ground floor remains the same. On the right, everything in red is new, so you can see the neighbouring property here. And you can see the extension is just short of two metres from the rear elevation. You can also see the window here, which is in the side elevation of the neighbouring property. That looks out onto the flat roof currently and will continue to do so. So you can see the extension there at a ninety degree angle. Moving on to photos, so this is taken from hairstock close, so Andover Road is behind me. Application site's in the middle and the extensions to the left there in that gap, again, set two metres in. And up to the other side of the street, so again, application site's in the middle. So it's in this gap here to the left, again, two metres, so just hidden by the neighbouring property there. The next photos we'll see are from the rear garden of this property to the left. This wall that you can see here is the side wall and the roof of the existing utility room extension. So from here, you'll see the extension extend two metres out and around two metres to eaves at this point. So it's filling in this gap here behind the tree. And a bit of a longer view down the garden. So again, two metres out and two metres to eaves up. So filling in the area directly in front of us. And this is some internal photos of the property next door. So it's regarding this window here, which is on the side elevation facing the side wall. The neighbour's kindly given permission to show these photos on the inside, so you can see the side window here. So from this perspective, looking out onto the wall, you'll have the extension in view here. And then the bottom image, it's this window here. So the extension runs behind this wall, so that will remain uninterrupted. From eleven hairstock close to the rear, so the extension will be to the right of the property. And again, from number eleven, so the extension will be above the flat roof area here. And you can also appreciate the level change between the two dwellings here. Officers' recommendation is for approval and that concludes the presentation, Chair.
Thank you very much. We have no public speakers. So we'll go straight into the sections on our report. Shall we have questions on anything? Because it isn't a long report. I start, could I just ask, what difference will there be out of the side window of number twelve? Which is the property to the left of number thirteen. There's a window there already. And you've just said in your presentation, it will look out onto a flat roof. But is, is it, is the view higher than it was before or is it the same view?
It is looking onto the same roof. Originally, there was a pitched roof in this area that you see on the left. That was removed at the request of ourselves. So when looking at the, if I had to take you through to the elevations. So the window looks out here, so it, you can see it's slightly raised compared to the existing where you have that drop. That's because they have removed the pitch roof which was originally there. But the view directly forwards out of that window remains largely unchanged. It's just a small increase in the height of the flat roof.
Right, and that's looking east, isn't it? Is that correct?
Yes, it is, yeah.
There's no loss of light into that window?
Yes, because that looks onto the side elevation wall already. And then just going into the internal photos, if we could. Yes, it's-
For me, and I've been up to look at the site, I can't quite work out what that window of number twelve will look out at. You say it's over the flat roof, but it's going to be higher than what they look out at now. Is that correct?
The, the flat roof does, does rise a small amount. I don't have the exact number. But from, from this top image, you'll be looking at the, the window of the neighbouring extension, the post extension. And then from the bottom image, this view remains uninterrupted from that angle because the extension's behind this wall here. So if you're stood at the back of the room, it would be no different looking out of that window.
So this, the pictures there are number twelve, are they?
Exactly, from inside number twelve, yes.
And that window on that side wall is, that's, that's the view. So it's already looking at brick?
It is, yeah. So that, that top one looks at brick and then the extension will be directly in front of that, but at a ninety degree angle.
I, I find it difficult to understand why there's no loss of light there then, if it's going to be higher.
It, it, so can we able to go, I'll just take the slide back, Chair. Yeah, thank you.
And it's, I don't understand, these photos have not been labelled. So that view, whether you've got the hose, is that number twelve?
Yes, it is, yeah. That's from the rear garden of number twelve, yeah. Yes, so the wind, the, the window at the moment is sat here. So look, that's the side wall that the last image was looking out into. And again, it sits about here. So you can just see the difference in the, the height of the roof there. So from that point, just to, to keep it flat and level. And maybe this shows it better as well. So that blue is the neighbour's window, the side living room window. And then you can see the extension there in red, so directly in front towards the side wall.
And what do you estimate the difference in height to be?
We're talking definitely centimetres. I said about ten, fifteen, so sort of looking at the plans and comparing.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair, anyone want to ask questions or Robert?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor Reed and councillor Cleare for questions.
Councillor Reed? Councillor Reed? Let's leave that then and go on to councillor Cleare and then come back to councillor Reed. Councillor Cleare?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. I was going to ask more or less the same things about you because I had concerns or have concerns about that side window. Robert, can you just assure me that if this gets past this application, the residents with the side window, number twelve, will still just be looking out on the same wall as they're looking out on now? And no, nothing else? Please, just put my mind at rest if you could.
Yes, so the side window is located to the front of the property. So if the, the neighbouring residents are at, at the rear of the house in the middle of their living room, that view is uninterrupted. That remains the same. If, it's more if they're toward the front and obviously looking at that side window where you can already see that side elevation wall existing, you will be able to see the extension from that perspective because it does come out, as I said, at ninety degrees. So from, if you're stood at the very front of the living room, sort of looking back through that side window, you'll be looking toward the extension.
Okay, councillor Cleare. Councillor Reed, you wanted to ask a question?
Sorry Chairman, my, the answer's already been given. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any more questions?
No further questions, Chair.
I've got another question. Robert, when I went round this close, it took me some time to find how to get onto it actually. But anyway, when I got in there, I noticed that they're all similar and they've all got this little garage at the side, but no one in that close has built on top of their garage. So this would be a change in the street scene, wouldn't it?
Yes, there is one example at the very, very top of the street. It's the, it's the very last property. I can't remember when the application was, but there is one extension there above the garage, a two-storey. And the assessment regarding that, and it goes back to the, the photos that I showed, is because, because the extension follows high-quality places in it and it's subservient. The views up the street and down the street are actually uninterrupted because of that setback. So the images that I showed, you, you wouldn't be able to see that extension there. Obviously directly in front of the house you would, but that's not considered adversely harmful in the character of the area.
Okay. I, I thought that if there is one up the end of the close, I thought that garage was set further back than this garage, but I might be wrong. So Vice Chair, that's it for questions?
Yes, Chair.
Debate? Any debate?
No debate indicated on chat, Chair. Oh, we have councillor Gordon Smith, Chair.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
I, I, I think it's rather unhappy. I think it, if you look at it from the side, the officer's correct and you, you wouldn't see the extension. But if you're walking up the road and looking sideways, it would be very obvious. And all of the other houses are of a, are of a sort and of a piece and work very well together. I accept the end one, that the top end and the high bit of ground at the back does have an extension built on. And I suppose that's an exception. But I, I just think it's a pretty awful bit of architecture, quite frankly. And a place that quite unusually has retained its character. I mean, all too often in Oxford and a lot of other places, you see, you know, a nice house type and everyone's built bits on it. And it ends up looking an awful dog's breakfast, quite frankly. So I'm, I'm unhappy about it, but those are just my views.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give my view now. I, I feel the same as councillor Gordon Smith. It's not that it's brilliant architecture, it's just that when you look at the street scene, they're all the same. And you know, the, the questions, the doubt I have in my mind is should we be giving something permission which is really crammed into a small space? And it must make that number twelve just slightly darker, that window. I can't understand, there's no loss of light. And, or if the architecture's not a great merit then, which is very rude because people live there and they love living there. But you know, why add something on the side? I, I, I'm, I'm struggling with this and I haven't quite decided how to vote. But anyway, I probably have to make my mind up because, are there any more contributions?
Yes, I have a contribution to debate, Chair, and then councillor Leamy.
Yep. So-
Sorry, thank you. Yes, just trying to get my camera on. Is that working? I can't see myself. Oh dear.
No, you haven't got your camera on.
Ah, there we are. Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm afraid that poor architecture is not a, a, a reason, a planning reason for turning this down. And our officers have worked with the applicants and, and they have assessed that there is no significant harm caused by the extension. You can't see it in the street scene except when you're exactly opposite it. I notice on the photograph, one of the photographs, we can see that one of the houses has got solar panels all over the roof. So that's a bit different from all the other houses. So none of them are going to be exactly the same. And with time, you know, houses do change and alter and people do things to them and knock down chimneys or put up chimneys or whatever. And that's just the way our, our communities evolve. And I don't think that that's a planning reason either for turning it down. I don't, I don't think we have any reason at all to officially turn this down, I'm afraid. However much we don't like the architecture. So I will be supporting the officers, Chair. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Could I just clarify my comment? I wasn't, I did, if I said anything bad about the architecture, that's not what I meant. What I meant was that it is a time walk, it's an architecture of its time. And as councillor Gordon Smith said, amazingly, it stayed like that, apart from this one house at the end. And this will be a departure from that. And at the moment, the houses do have this symmetry. And you know, it isn't sort of architecture perhaps would be built now, but it is quite attractive to look at. And then obviously the people are happy there. But as soon as we start allowing extensions, when they are, it's so close to the property next door, this whole symmetry of this close is going to go. And I, for one, think that's a pity. And I wasn't meaning to be rude about the architecture. I say it's bad, bad architecture. I'm sure they're very well-built houses as well. So that's just a clarification to what I said. Councillor Leamy?
Thank you. There's quite a lot of thought. And I'm more in time now to consider the points that councillor Gordon Smith raised. because it does change the whole character of the road. And for that reason, I find it extremely difficult to go along with this at all. So I'm going to think hard before I vote and I think I probably don't like this, the way this has been done.
Vice Chair, any more contributions to debate?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor McLean for debate.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. I've been listening to this one because it's, you look at people wanting to put extensions on their properties. And if for some of the reasons we've just been given on the previous application, about not having a right to light and all the other bits and pieces with that. But if we go against this particular one for putting an extension on someone's property because it doesn't look right, that means we're never going to agree to another planning application for an extension again. And we've got to stick to the policies that we've been given to decide on it. It can't be our personal opinions. I'm guilty of that myself a lot of the time, as you well know, but.
Thank you. Vice Chair, is that it?
Sorry, yes, Chair.
Yeah, thank you. So this application has been recommended for, sorry, for permission. And the conditions are on page 141 and 142 and informative 142, 143. There are no extra conditions on the update sheet. And so, Dave, if you'd like to call through the names of the councillors to see how they wish to vote.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Councillor Cleare?
I will vote for, yes.
Thank you. Councillor Evans?
On balance, four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
I think I'm going to have to vote against it.
Thank you. Councillor Leaming?
Yes, I think not, I was against it.
Thank you. Councillor McLean?
Reasons expressed, I'll have to vote for.
Councillor Reed?
For.
Councillor Rutter?
Four.
And councillor Pearson?
Four. That was four, David, sorry, I'm a bit croaking.
Yes, thank you. Six, six, four until against, Chair.
So that application is approved. Councillors, would you like a break now?
Yes, please, Chair.
So it is five, two, four. A 10-minute break, do a roll call before we start the next agenda item.
Yes, thank you again, Chair. Councillor Cleare?
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Evans?
I'm here, yes.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
I'm here.
Councillor Leaming?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor McLean?
Present.
Councillor Reed?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Rutter?
Present.
And councillor Pearson?
Present.
All members again present for the afternoon session. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So we now come to agenda item 13. Reference 20/01590/OUT. This is One Glebe Villas, Trampers Lane at North Borhunt. It's a direction of a single detached three- or four-bedroom dwelling to the side of One Glebe Villas, which include details of the layout and access to the site and the installation of a new sewage treatment plant. The case officer is Rose Vista. Good afternoon, Rose.
Hello, Chair.
And when you're ready, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Chairman, apologies, that was my fault, I got distracted and haven't loaded the presentation up. So here we have the red line plan, you can see Trampers Lane to the east of the site. And here we have the aerial view, you can see to the south of the site is the continuously built-up road frontage. And to the north, there is a gap in the developed road frontage. There is a block of flats here to the rear, setback approximately 60 metres, I believe, from the front of the roadside. Here we have the proposed site plan, showing that you can get a new dwelling on the site. Two car parking spaces are shown here and there's an access track leading to the field to the rear of the site. Here we have a plan showing the new access to service site where visibility displays of 2.4 metres by 43 metres can be achieved. And here we have some indicative evasions in the ground floor plan for the proposed dwelling. And here we have some photos. The top left hand is opposite the site, looking south along Trampers Lane, where you can see the developed frontage. The top left, top right, sorry, from the same place, looking to the north down the hill, where you can see the existing block of flats here. And then further down, approximately 80 metres away from the site, is the bungalow here. And bottom left-hand site is from a little bit further south, looking up towards the site. And then bottom right-hand is looking at some existing outbuildings as they can be seen from the road. Here are those outbuildings that we just saw, so these are within the site. And this is looking towards Trampers Lane at the top. While at the bottom left-hand is the two outbuildings while looking towards the west. And at the bottom right-hand, this is the front garden of Glebe Villas, showing the existing hedge that would be removed for the new access and then replanted further back. The recommendation is to refuse. And there are a few updates on the update sheet regarding ecology. The solenoid mitigation has been paid, so that has removed one reason for refusal. However, the ecologist has recommended further plans which haven't been provided and that's formed a replacement reason for refusal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rose, is that, is that it? Yes, thank you. We have one member of the public, a supporter, Chris Ward, who is the agent for the application. Good afternoon again, Mr. Ward.
Chair, could I ask if councillor Reed would turn off his microphone, please?
Oh, sorry, I didn't know it was-
Good afternoon, Chairman.
Good afternoon. Yeah, so you have three minutes when you're ready.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chairman and councillors, and thank you. I'm here to support the application. I hope you have all seen and read the note I emailed out to members on the 7th of December, which tells you that I strongly disagree with the interpretation being given by officers to policy MTRA 3 and what is meant by developed frontage. This site, as a reminder, the site was specifically included in the developable frontage in 1998 and has never been looked at and excluded since. Hence unusually, I'm going to be critical of the report. Turning to that report, this advises us that site is at the end of a continuously developed frontage, but advises that development stops at the house. This is simply not correct. Officers advise there are two reasons for giving that advice and why the outbuildings are not part of the frontage, because they're incidental to the residential use and because they're setback from the road. In terms of incidental, the policy simply refers to a developed frontage and does not distinguish between the purposes for which buildings are used. It is incorrect to read that into the policy. To the second issue, the garage varies between 9.5 and 10.5 metres back from the road, which compares with the frontage of Liliput Cottage, four doors away, which is between 9.5 and 10.8 metres back from the road, but part of the accepted road frontage. Many houses on Trampers Lane are further back. Please note that page 4 power 5 of the report advises there is an irregular building line in the area which the development proposed would continue. Hence both reasons given for this not being a developed frontage are incorrect and there is no conflict with MTRA 3. It is noted that the officers considered also that development would add a visual intrusion into the rural character, but also that the landscape officer has no objection. Please look at the buildings on site in the photos and decide if these are what you regard as rural in character and necessary to protect. Dealing with ecology, it's noted our report says there's a low potential for bats. The applicant is a country boy and confident that neither building has ever had bats in it, but if a survey is necessary next May, then I invite you to add this as a condition. It can include any mitigation required. The rest of the report is accepted. There is, in my view, no conflict with policy MTRA 3 or any other reason to say no, so I ask that you grant permission. I will happy to answer any questions. Finally, if I don't run out of time, please note the six letters of support have been discounted because they didn't include addresses. These are all from local people. Addresses have been provided, but the applicant, due to Covid, requested that I didn't contact these people and ask them to repeat their objections. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, very good timing. I'm going to take all the report, all the headings together. Oh, no, no, sorry, we're not at that. Questions for Mr. Ward? And then we'll go on to questions for Rose.
No questions indicated, Chair. No, still no questions, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ward, if you could turn your camera and your microphone off. And then where I was, all the reports, questions on any of the reports, to Rose.
No questions indicated, Chair.
Thank you. Could I just ask Rose about the drainage on page 165? And it says details of infiltration testing and soakaways are required. Could you just comment on that?
So some of the details were provided. I did make an error saying that it would be linked into the existing water treatment plant. It would actually be a replacement water treatment plant. So for infiltration testing and soakaways, the infiltration testing shows that the amount of water provided or generated from the development can be absorbed or taken away from the site at an acceptable speed, so it wouldn't cause flooding. And details of the size and location of the soakaways have also not been provided. This is why the drainage engineer recommended a condition should the application be granted.
Yeah, thank you. And I've got a further question, Rose. On page 168, which is part of your presentation, I did point out to you beforehand that this is actually an inaccurate map because it's got the Borhunt Blues Club temporarily closed. But that is the Borhunt Village Hall, where we go to the parish council and it has a bar where the social club meets. And then it's got Borhunt Social Club on the other side of the road. I don't know what that is, but that is, it doesn't really matter to this application, but it's an incorrect labelling for the sake of accuracy.
I got this map from Google, councillor, so it could be that it's been inaccurately loaded by a member of the public.
Southern Wickham Ward, that's also, you know, I go there regularly to the parish council. Okay, Vice Chair, any more questions?
And we have, yes, Chair, we have councillor Pearson and councillor McLean with questions, thank you.
Councillor Pearson?
Yes, Chairman, the, Mr. Ward commented about MTRA 3. I wonder if Rose would like to comment on what he said about that because that seems to be crucial to whether this application should be accepted or not.
So my understanding, Chair, of MTRA 3 is that the continuously developed road frontage is formed by plots. So within that plot, you can have development. In this case, I have considered that the dwelling forms the end of the continuously developed road frontage and anything after that has been set back from the road frontage. That was my interpretation of the policy. And I hope that clears things up.
Okay, councillor Pearson? You're muted, you're muted.
I have a frog in my throat. I'm not aware that North Borrent has a development boundary, does it have? Or does the whole of the village come within countryside policies?
It's a settlement that does not have a settlement boundary, councillor, so it's considered to be countryside. But limited development might, may be considered acceptable within a continuously developed road frontage, sorry?
Right, okay, thank you very much.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Just looking at the Google map again. Can you please, if you would, Rose? The frontage of the property, just pointed out by Mr. Ward, it doesn't state whether it's a building or an outhouse or anything else. I wonder, could you expand on that? And if what Mr. Ward is saying is right, does that change any of our thinking? Thank you.
So development isn't classified specifically within the policy. But in this case, I consider that the outbuildings are to set, are setback and don't form part of the continuously built-up road frontage. I would consider that this plot as a whole would form part of the developed road frontage and anything after the dwelling would not count as part of the road frontage and therefore would be part of the countryside. And I consider that this application would result in an encroachment into the countryside.
Can I come back, Chair, if I may? Just looking at our drawing and the outline in red, it's set back very, in relation to Glebe Villas, isn't it? It's set back, but not vastly, looking at the outbuildings. And I just wonder, I'm just trying to come to terms with it, I suppose is what I'm saying. Can you explain further, just to convince me that what you're doing, what you're saying is right?
Well, there's no specific part within the policy that says how far back development should be to be classed as part of the road frontage. In this case, the main dwelling is significantly closer and these are clearly outbuildings that are complementary to that and form part of the plot as a whole. If you, if we were to subdivide the plot and put a new building on, I would not necessarily say that the location of those buildings would form part of the developed road frontage. I don't know if you can, no?
Okay, councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair, yes, that doesn't convince me, I'm sorry to say.
Okay.
There are no further questions, Chair.
We'll move into debate. I'd quite like to start because- We'll move into debate. I'd quite like to start because as it's in our board, I do know this especially well. Now, if you don't know Trumper's Lane, Trumper's Lane is a very long lane and it is in the countryside. And the beginning of it is full of houses until you get to this point. And then you've got the two Gleed Villas, two first of all, and then number one. And then you've got this gap and you can see on our map on page 168, and we did see it on Rose's photos, there is a bungalow all on its own bizarrely, which has obviously had a permission a long time back before we had MTRA three. And then there's another gap and that goes on until we get another start of the houses. So there are two significant gaps in Trumper's Lane of not continuous buildings. And the other side of the bungalow, much further on and next to where the development starts again, there is, there was an application in for building a house, which we refused, same as this, that it was much bigger. We refused it on the grounds of MTRA three because it wasn't part of the continuous road frontage. So if we're going to give permission for this, then we're going to open the floodgates, basically. That's going to come in and there are a lot of trees, a lot of trees have been found on the site anyway. And there's lots of woods at the back, as you can see. So I do understand Mr Ward's defence of wanting to put the house in there for his clients. But it is, it is, in my view, totally against MTRA three. It is countryside. It's not part of the developed frontage. And I think really that we should be clear about our policies and support the MTRA three because it's tantamount to building in the countryside. And so I don't know if that helps people if they don't know Trumper's Lane very well. But that is the situation of it. Vice Chair, any more debate?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor Pearson, councillor Reed and councillor Clear. Thank you.
Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chairman. I have to admit, this one worries me because it seems to hang entirely upon interpretation of MTRA three. I'm very aware that North Borrent is linear development, it's a long line, and there are gaps in that line. And I, as you've just said, Chairman, arguably could be argued that this house is an infill in one of those gaps because there are houses farther along the lane. But that makes it almost a disseminated village and it is, as you say, countryside. But I would have liked to have seen a little bit more to hang my hat on than just an interpretation of a policy. I know it's a professional job of the planning office to interpret policies, but this is one of these areas that seems to be a grey area and it could look either way. And I would have liked to have seen something else in the report that had convinced me that, yes, MTRA three, it becomes very important and overrides all the other things because the consultations don't seem to be negative. So I'm concerned about this one, so I'd be interested to hear what other councillors say. But at present, I'm not convinced.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm very familiar with this particular road. I travel it quite a lot. This is yet another application in that road that is balanced on MTR three, MTRA three. Following the last two applications and another site, I spoke with the strategic planning officer who wrote and admitted that the wording can be misinterpreted. And I once again feel that this is a misinterpretation because if you look at it, the road in its entirety, you will never build anywhere in it because there's always a reason why, if you read MTRA three one way, you're going to come out with it and say it's negative. No other department that we've sought advice from have actually come out against it. To me, it's a misinterpretation of MTR three and I know that it is due to be rewritten, so to make it much more clearer. And so it cannot be read in two directions at once. Personally, Chairman, I shall be in favour of supporting this application, not to refuse, but to grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Clear?
Thank you, Chair. As one of the ward councillors as well for Southwick and Borhant, the description that councillor Evans gave us about Trumper's Lane is, to my mind, quite correct. And I feel that policy MTR three has been quoted quite correctly with this application. I'm sorry, but I support the officer on this one. Thank you.
Vice Chair, any further debate?
Yes, if I may make a contribution, Chair?
Thank you.
I just think this is a completely clear-cut case. I've read the report very carefully. I think our officer has looked into it very carefully. It is one of those marginal situations, but I think we need to trust our officers. And if we give way on this, we give way in hundreds of other places across the district and our policy of MTRA three goes out the window. We must support the officers, we must support our plan and our policies and we must refuse this application. Thank you.
Do you have any further requests for debate?
No further requests for debate, Chair.
I would just like to come back on something that councillor Reed said. The bottom, and as he drives up the road quite often, he must have seen that there is a lot of infill development which has gone on down the bottom end of the lane. And it's not all, you know, some of it's set back, as Mr Ward has said in his email to us. But quite clearly, it's started countryside and then there's this one odd bungalow in the middle. But it's quite a long stretch of countryside.
Chairman, a point of order. You're having two bites of the cherry.
Well, I am the Chair and I'm allowed, I let other people speak twice and I am speaking twice. I've allowed on several occasions councillors to speak twice, even though they've already seen it. And I haven't interrupted them. And I'm just trying to clarify because I'm not sure that everybody understands this lane. And they may then vote how they wish. But there is a long bit of countryside, one side, then there's a small bungalow and then there's another one. And we have already refused the other end of the gap in the countryside. So I just wish councillors to be aware of that before they come to make their mind up.
Chair, we have councillor McLean wishing to debate as well.
Thank you, Chair. Very kind. It's an application that sort of worries me a little bit because what we've got is two outhouses on a site that the applicant is looking to replace with a dwelling for people to live in. MTRA three is a is a policy that can be read in any number of ways, almost a bit like MTRA four. And I'm reading it one way and I guess the office is reading it in another way. If anybody, I'd just like to hear some other views on this before I say, oh, I'm going to vote. Tricky one.
Are there any other views, councillor Rutter?
There are no more councillors for debate, Chair. Perhaps we should go to Mrs Pinnock for her professional opinion. Thank you.
Mrs Julie?
Thank you very much, Chair. I mean, I would guide the committee that, you know, your officers interpret this policy regularly. We deal with many applications that don't come to planning committee. We do so consistently. This site is contrary to MTRA three. It is the, we believe that it encroaches beyond the end of the frontage here. And if you allowed this one, you would allow many more along here to encroach further along the road, Chair. And I think that would be, as another member said, you'd be opening the floodgates to various extensions to the end of infill rows. And I think, you know, your officer advice is contrary to policy. We have refused other schemes in this infill area as well as others and we apply MTRA three consistently, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, is that it?
Yes, no further debate, Chair.
Thank you. So this application has been recommended for refusal. And we do have the reasons for refusal, but has one of those gone? Could I just check with you, Rose, that it was concerning the Solent Recreation mitigation has been secured, so it's no longer a reason for refusal?
That's correct, Chair, yes. But the ecology officer recommended further reports that haven't been submitted. So a replacement reason for refusal regarding ecology has been put in on the update sheet.
Yes, I see, yes. So the reasons for refusal are on page 166 with a different reason, the reason three, which is on our update sheet on page six. Is that correct, Rose? Have I got it right?
That's correct.
Thank you. So Dave, over to you. This is for people wish to refuse or do they wish to? What would the terminology be? Because it's always very confusing when it's a refusal recommended and then you either vote with the officers or you don't, so.
Or against. Yeah. So with the officers' recommendation?
Dave, yes?
Yes. Councillor Clear?
So you're calling the roll call, are you, Dave?
Yes, I am.
I couldn't undo the button, sorry. I'm with the officer of refuse, yes.
Thank you. Councillor Evans?
Refuse.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
I vote with the officers and refuse.
Thank you. Councillor Laming?
I refuse this application.
Councillor McLean?
Against.
Against the officer's recommendation.
That's correct, Dave.
Thank you. Councillor Reed?
Against.
Councillor Rutter?
For refusal.
And councillor Pearson?
Permit development.
Permit development?
Yeah, against the officer.
Against the officer's recommendation. Thank you. So that's so that's five in favour of the officer's recommendation to refuse and three against.
So this application is refused for the reasons I've discussed. Thank you. And we now come to the last item of business, which is Agenda Item 13. And it's confirmation of TPO 2281 and it's land at Fallowfields Compton Street, Compton. And Ivan Gergler is the case officer. Good afternoon, Ivan.
Chairman, I'm sorry, we're just changing officers over. Could you just give us a minute for Ivan to enter the room?
Are we going ahead of ourselves?
Chair, you mentioned it was item 13. In fact, it's Agenda Item 14.
It is, yes. Yes, it's been a very long day. Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
It has indeed been a long day.
Where I read that from is on the update sheet. So it's incorrect on the update sheet, as everyone will see on page six, but correct in the report, so which is why I made that error. And I wasn't sharp enough to notice that the two numbers were different. So for those who are listening to the broadcast, we're just getting the case officer writing with his presentation. We have no public speeches on this item.
Good afternoon, councillors. This is for confirmation of TPO 2281 at Fallowfields Compton Street, Compton for a walnut tree. The history to it was that we received a 211 notification to fill a walnut tree in the back garden. The tree officer visited, a tempo assessment was done and it was concluded that the tree was worthy of a TPO. So the TPO was served on the 8th of July. At the time of serving the TPO, we had two objections, one from the owner and one for the neighbour. And there was a tree report, which I've put in appendix two, that was going with it. Now, the reason why that is put in there, because the objectors both said that as long as the tree report's put with this report, they wouldn't speak today. So that's why it's there. Basically, some of the objections are that they do not consider the tree to have public amenity. They block set their light, the tree canopy is sparse and they have concerns about the tree roots and branch failure and damage to the roots on one service, which I'll explain as we go through. As you can see, the map, the blue dots is the tree in the back garden you see there, just above us, that's it there. So that's the location of the tree and the property in the back garden. If we go to the next slide, please, you can see that walnut tree is underneath the red arrow there. Now, the AP report that comes, as you see, says the tree had sparse foliage and was of poor health. But that looks like a sort of quite healthy tree to me from a distance and you can see it's very green and not full of dead wood, as you expect from an unhealthy tree. If we move on to the next slide, you can see this was taken a few weeks ago. The tree, again, is below the red arrow there. And if we go to the next slide, you can see this is the view of the tree from the garden. So you can see a good extension growth, it's a balanced crown. I can't see any evidence of the tree of ill health. It looks normal. The argument with the people saying it didn't look so well vigorous as the one up the road, but you know, I haven't seen that tree. It might be a younger tree, but you know, there is no obvious things that that tree is in your health. If we move to the next, that's the next one, is this is a view from the back garden. Now, the owners claim that the tree spoils their garden, you know, the enjoyment of the garden, they can't get full enjoyment. But you can see that it is a, you know, big garden, but it still has a fairly small tree in it. Now, this is the damaged roots that Mr Gregory is alleging is dangerous and it's rotten. But as you can see, it's only a small root compared to the rest of the root. The bit above is the main root, that's a lateral root that's been caught by the mower. In circumstances like this, if there's alleged to this type of thing, I would expect the AP consultant to give me a, you know, sort of saying how much percentage is decayed, but there's no information at all to inform us that, you know, what degree of decay is in that root. And so it's only a minor root compared to the rest of the tree. So going on the government guidelines, we know that the Secretary of State's advice is a higher the amenity value of the tree and the greater impact of the proposed work to have amenity, the stronger reasons need before consent is granted. Well, we've not received that in this case. There's no further information. There's no agricultural diagnosis to say what's going on with the tree. So, you know, there's nothing to suggest that the tree is of ill health, judging by the photographs. So, you know, with the tree, with its visual public amenity, it is under threat. And at the moment, the tree appears to be health, you know, reasonable health and vitality. So the recommendation is to confirm the TPO. Thank you.
So we'll have questions on anything. And if I could start, so the surface root that you've just showed us a picture of?
Yes.
That damage caused by the mower probably
Yes.
is not affecting the health of the tree?
No, it's a minor root. There's only a lateral root. It's not a main structural root. In his report, Thomas Grokka claimed that he tapped the roots to, and says there's decay. But obviously, if you tap a root at the grain, it's going to sound hollow anyway because there's nothing behind it to support it.
Thank you, yeah. Vice Chair, any questions?
I have a question whilst the others gather their thoughts, Chair, if I may? I have a question whilst the others gather their thoughts, Chair, if I may.
Yeah.
Hello, Mr Gerdler.
Hello.
Can I just ask, having a TPO doesn't mean that you can do nothing to a tree, does it? It just means you have to get permission to crown lift, to trim, whatever. So the owners could do something with this tree to make it perhaps less overbearing in their garden without taking it out completely, within the rules, within certain, what's the word, conscribed ways? Yes. So could you just tell us that, please?
Yes, that the tree could be pruned, but I would want to find out why. There would need to be agricultural justification to reduce the tree. Now, that would normally be if the tree is have poor structural condition, i.e. rotten or weak points or, you know, something major wrong with it. But obviously, bearing in mind, if you start pruning a tree, you're going to induce decay into the tree. You're going to open up to threats from organisms and that sort of decay organisms. So, you know, yes, the TPO doesn't stop them doing the work, as long as it's applied to all the council, which then we would have to go through the, you know, the process of assessing the tree's health and also the effects on the mean value of the tree.
Any more questions, vice chair?
We have councillor Pearson with a question. Thank you.
Councillor Pearson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Either, those exposed roots, should we or could we, within terms of the TPO, do something about protecting those roots? Because, I mean, quite clearly, they're prone to damage as they are like that. Although I can't imagine what damage it did to the mower when it hit it. Can those roots be protected by a condition?
No, you can't, you can't actually enforce the owners to do that. I'm not too concerned about the size of it. So it's only a small root anyway. There's not a lot of the big, you know, big roots. And also, there'd be other roots in the radial spread of the roots anyway. So, you know, I don't see there's that is a big problem at the moment.
Okay, thank you for your advice.
Vice Chair, any more?
No further questions, Chair.
And any debate? Can I just say that I do think I agree with Ivan that this tree does have a visual public amenity. And we hear from Ivan that it's in, there's no evidence of ill health and none has been presented to us. So I do think, and as the vice chair said, we, you know, the owner can put in applications to amend various areas of it. So I think we have to reconfirm the TPO personally. I don't know if anyone else wants to.
We have councillor Gordon Smith, Chair.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, judging from the photographs, it's a lovely looking tree. As Ivan said, it's got a, it's got a really good, well-balanced shape. It's not deformed. It's got this minor root damage. I think it'd be absolutely tragic to cut it down. And a tree officer I used to work with in Basingstoke always used to say that they used to get two lots of complaints twice a year. One was in the spring when the leaves came out and the other time when the leaves came off and ended up in people's gutters. And everybody wanted to take the trees down. But it's lovely. It's a smashing tree.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any more?
No further debate, Chair.
So our recommendation, which is on page 175, is having taken into consideration the representations received, the tree preservation order 2281 is confirmed. So Dave, over to you for you to ask the committee whether they wish to confirm this TPO.
Yes, thank you again, Chair. Councillor Clear?
For.
Councillor Evans?
For.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
For.
Councillor Laming?
For.
Councillor McLean?
For.
Councillor Reed?
For.
Councillor Rutter?
For.
And councillor Pearson?
If I may call to country and western song, would man spare that tree?
So, thank you, Chair, that's all. Yes, thank you.
So that TPO is confirmed, which brings us to the end of the
Thank you.
And so all that's left is to wish you a very happy Christmas, if you can spend it with your family or whatever. I know a lot of us are just spending it home alone, as it were, but it's not going to be forever, is it? And happy New Year and healthy New Year above all. And we will see you all next year.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you all and especially the officers for their work this year.